I'd like to call the planning board meeting of October 2nd, 2025 to order. I'd like to introduce planning board members and staff to my far left, Steve Yost. Got Sean Henry, Beverly Bookin, Doug Cook, our vice chair Jane Ramsen, I'm Rick Noonan, the chair. Staff, we've got Greg Catamatory, our planning director, and Eric Kinderly is our staff planner. Just a little bigger so I can see it. Under first order of business this evening, A and R's site plan reviews preliminary subdivisions and amendments. First item is an A and R plan submitted by Daniel Fonzie to divide 35 Massasoit Road assessors map 231 lot 17. At the applicant's request, this is to be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is October 16th, 2025.
I move that we continue 35 Massasoit Road A and R to October 16th, 2025. Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second by Beverly Bookin. Since we're all in person, I just need a simple yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Next on the agenda is an A and R plan submitted by Cupboard of Gloucester LLC. Care of Mark Klewski Esquire to divide property at 41 Ho Ave assessors map 216 lot 75.
You'll recall from the last meeting, this was referred, there were a couple outstanding questions for the legal department. Those discussions have continued and the applicant has requested to continue the meeting of October 16th.
I move that we continue 41 How Ave A and R to our next scheduled meeting of October 16th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second by Steve Yost. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next under A and R's is an A and R plan submitted by Steve C Perry and Oliver Radford for a line adjustment at 1044 R and 1040 R Washington Street map 142 lots 2, 3, and 4. Laura's here, is Attorney Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street Gloucester. The owners are Stephen Perry and Oliver Radford, and Mr. Radford and Mr. Perry are on Zoom tonight, as well as the surveyor who is Alpa Consulting. Shaheen Shaheen is on Zoom in case you have any questions. And I can share my screen if I'm allowed or add it as a panelist or if...
Just provided that access.
Fairly simple, but I think it's best to see it. So, the owners are seeking to add two after acquired lots to their main lot at 1044 R Washington to make one large lot. 1044 R is shown as Lot 1, which is this large lot. And lots 2 and 3 are these small triangular lots that are going to be added to Lot 1. Lot 1 has about 32,000 square feet, and after the addition of lots 2 and 3, it'll be 35,000 square feet. The owners are seeking to construct a garage that will straddle the property line between lots 1 and 2. And you can see here is where the proposed garage will be. The building inspector is requiring the lots to be combined before they can become allowed to construct the garage. The ZBA has approved the variance for being closer to the street than the main house upon a combination, conditioned upon a combination of these lots. Pursuant to subdivision rules and regulation 2.2.5.4, a lot that is to be joined with an adjacent lot and is not intended to be a separate lot is not considered a subdivision and therefore A and R endorsement is appropriate. And I would ask that you endorse the plan. Happy to answer any questions.
You're agreeing?
No concerns.
Questions from board members? See you none. Walks up the motion.
Forward. I move that we approve the A and R plan submitted by Stephen Perry and Oliver Radford for lot line adjustments at 1044 R and 1040 R Washington Street.
Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second by Steve Yost. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next on the agenda this evening, A and R plan submitted by Tomas Schmidt, Cara Barbara M Glentrowski, irrevocable trust, lot line adjustment at 28, 28R and 22R Eastern Point Road map 132 lots 1, 38, and 39.
Good evening. For the record Salvatore Frontero, 46 Middle Street for the applicant. The applicant owns four lots of land. I don't know if you would call the plan up. As you can see, owns four lots of land on east, between Eastern Point Road and Ledge Lane. The parcel identified as 28, excuse me, as 22 is a two-family house. The lot identified as 28, to the bottom below that is the Colonial Inn. And the lot behind that is 28R, which has a existing house on it. And the lot 2A is 22R. So there's four lots there, existing four lots being reconfigured. And you can see lot 2A is the reason we really did all this. We did the lot line reconfiguration to make 2A a buildable lot. It lacked the 20,000 square feet. And I should note that right about where the real lot line is at 22, it changes from R10 to R20. So it's R10 on Eastern Point Road, it would be R20 on Ledge Lane. So the lot does have adequate frontage on lot, on Ledge Lane in accordance with the R20 standard. However, there's a stream that completely cuts off access. So the applicant looked into wetlands crossing, and they really can't do that. The Conservation Commission won't approve it if you have an alternate means of access, which we do. So what we did is went to the zoning board of appeals, and we got a variance to access that lot by means other than the frontage. There were three conditions on that. The first was obviously that we get the A and R done. The second was that it's limited to no more than a two-family use. And the third was that we create a shared driveway agreement as far as maintenance of the driveway as between 22 and 22R. The drive, the existing driveway on 22 will be widened and continued on to the lot line for lot 2A. So this is the first step in the process, obviously. And as part of this also, we, if you look at the lot 3B in the rear, we also reconfigured the lot lines there so that before the driveway was encroaching onto the other lot, as you can see right there. So we moved the lot line so that the driveway was contained completely within 22. So we kind of did that as a house cleaning matter as part of this. But again, the main reason for the reconfiguration where 28 gave some land to 22R, which is lot 2A, was to make that a buildable lot. And so you can see the lot line changes in there, and we requested this be approved. Thank you. And I should mention that all the lots do have adequate, do have the required frontage on a way or street. And the only difference is that the lot 2A with the 80 feet of frontage is not going to be accessed through Ledge Lane. Thank you.
Background here, Greg.
Again, a reconfiguration, there was a prior A and R plan that was submitted back in the 80s?
I think it was.
80s, 90s vintage, that it basically, this application doesn't really affect the frontage that was approved in the past. And mostly just bringing that lot 2A into compliance with the R20 standard for lot area. And with the relief granted from the board, there are no other issues at this point.
Questions?
Do we have any concerns about the shared driveway of just having had a recent case with a driveway with requirements and things like that?
So is that driveway something that was approved by the board for access?
It was, and it, and also it's going to be subject to approval from the fire department. So that'll make sure it's wide enough for emergency vehicles and there's adequate turnaround provided. The board did ask about that, but they deferred on it due to the fact that the, that the fire department has to approve it as well.
Wouldn't it come to the planning board later for common driveway permit?
There's, well, there's only two lots going, and I did talk to Mr. Catamatory about that. And it was decided that was the better route to go. But I actually volunteered the, I actually volunteered the common driveway maintenance agreement as a condition for that, partly for that reason, so that we're covered there as well.
So we can get caught between the zoning board and the planning board? If the planning, if the zoning board has offered the access through the frontage and reviewed it and conditioned it, then it can be approved that way as well?
Okay. Then I move that we approve the A and R plan submitted by Thomas Schmidt for a lot line adjustment at 28, comma 28R and 22R Eastern Point Road.
Motion?
Second.
We've got a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Beverly Bookin. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, an A and R plan submitted by Western Real Estate to divide property at 354 Main Street map 51 lot 57. Any representation?
Okay.
Could be permission, Steve?
Okay, the owner of the property, Western Real Estate, is proposing to subdivide two residential use lots with frontage on Scott Street from the parcel that currently contains the gas station at 354 Main Street. The zoning line runs through the gas station property. It's R5 and Neighborhood Business and B. The residential lots would be in the R5 zone, both of which would have the required frontage area. And I should say, for your record, my name is Steve Stupinski from Marmac Engineering Services in Andover, Mass. I prepared the farm aid plan that's before you this evening.
Okay. Questions on this one, Greg?
So Scott Street is a, is a private way. It's fairly steep in its existing condition. It serves multiple units towards the end of Scott Street as well as to the east on the plan. The planning board has a standard of both the adequacy of the way as well as to the buildable portion of the lot. There's, and I'm not super clear to what level of survey the topography was prepared. But I think the board would probably, it would, it would be advantageous for you to do a site visit for this one to make sure that you can make the finding that there's adequate access to the buildable portion of the lots for the R5 district.
What, what I could do, Mr. Chairman, is add that we did a very detailed topographic survey. I don't have all the spark rates on the plan because it would be very difficult to read. But you'll see the contours are essentially two-foot contours on the residential portion of, of the land. And where it was relatively flat, where it's relatively steep, we have, you know, a greater interval on the topography. But we, we located in detail the ledge. We located in detail the topography to be sure that they were buildable pads on each of the lots, which you can see on the plan as the white area, the unshaded area.
Any sense of...
And the lots are steep.
Any...
The... Sure. On, on lot 2, essentially, you can see the 22 and 24 contour. And so it's roughly about 3% going north-south. It's, there's a steep area off of Scott Street. So most likely they'd have to have sort of a serpentine driveway to access that buildable area. And then the same thing on lot 3. That's probably 4% to 5% slope in, in the middle area. And again, most likely a serpentine driveway that would access those areas from Scott Street. But we did look at it in terms of being able to get driveways, and we did have some sketch layouts to make sure that they would be accessible.
Thank you. The questions?
And maybe this is one for, is it Eric? Is your, is it your mouse that's on there? What's the dotted line, that curvy dotted line in lot 1?
There's a, it's a neighborhood business down here, and then it gets into the R5 district above it. So R5 splits that gas station down there.
And then it gets to R10 in about two seconds? Oh, no, I see. Oh, it's NB. Oh, I see.
NB, yeah, Neighborhood Business.
No, not the, not the, no, the curvy one.
This? Oh, that might...
Oh, that's... That, that's, that's just showing the limits of lot 1, the dash line.
The dash line shows the difference between the districts.
Okay. The, the curvy line in the back, that would be the edge of the curbing on the gas station.
Nope.
I think, I think I know what it is. So there's a, there's a dashed line that has arrows, and I think that's just showing the extent of lot 1 proposed.
Yep. It's not a boundary of any kind.
It's not a boundary.
Right. That was to make...
I see. You're just showing arrows. Got it. That those are the lot lines. Yep.
And I did that because of the zoning line running through the site.
Yep. Yep, 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 yep. No, I got it. I just thought it was some other boundary, but it's really just an indicating line. Got it?
Right. Exactly. I didn't want, I didn't want the zoning line to be misconstrued to be a property line, so.
Right. So, yeah, I would concur that we probably need a site visit. Do you people agree? To determine the adequacy of the way?
Yes.
So I guess we continue, Greg?
Yeah, we could try to set a date if you want to look at calendars now.
Oh, right. Site visit.
Now I'm assuming Mr. Stupinski, you'd like to join us?
Yes. Yep.
Well, we still have daylight. Pretty flexible. Whatever works for the board. Next week, perhaps?
I'm not flexible. Why are you all not so busy?
I said what works for the board.
So you're thinking during the day?
We could do late day. We could do whatever works for most.
If I could throw my oar in the water, so to speak, I would prefer not the 15th or 16th because I have meetings both of those evenings and late afternoon sidewalks. So.
So anyway, that would be... Actually looking toward next week if that works for you.
Probably next week is fine, yeah.
Okay.
So I could do Monday, early afternoon. I could do Tuesday, midday. I cannot do Wednesday. And I could do Thursday, midday.
Like 4, 5 o'clock?
Yep. I could do 5:30 on Monday. I cannot do Tuesday. I could do 6 o'clock on Wednesday. And I could do 7:30 on Thursday.
How about we shoot for the Monday? Because we are going to have, I think, some significant weather in the middle of the week too.
Oh, fun. Okay.
Which we need. So you want to say 5:30 on Monday?
No, the 13th. I thought we were talking about the following week.
Oh, I was, I was looking at next week.
Oh, yep, that's fine. Yep, the 6th of October.
Yep. 5:30. Does that work for you, Mr. Stupinski?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Yep. Yep.
All right, we will see everyone at 5:30 on Monday.
We just, where, what address are we meeting at? Right in the calendar.
We'll, we'll meet at, at the intersection of East Main and Scott Street. But I'll, I'll send out a link.
Okay, so then I need to make a motion to continue? Or to continue to the next?
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, okay. So I move that we continue the A and R plan submitted by Western Real Estate to divide property at 354 Main Street to our next scheduled meeting of October 16th, 2025.
Motion to continue?
So move.
I am Jane Ramsen, seconded by Doug Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, next on the adjust, or the agenda is a request for amendment of a cluster development plan filed by Seaside Legal Solutions on behalf of Upper Banjo LLC to permit a 25-unit residential development at 160, 158R, and 154A Essex Ave, assessors map 218, lots 38, 39, and 46. Laura's yours?
Thank you. I think Greg's going to bring me up as a panel.
Slide over out of the sun.
My apologies to the camera person. They're going to go sit out of my spot.
Your better side.
That may affect you being on camera, but...
I think I'm just in the corner of the screen.
I think we'll, we'll just have to think. Oh, no, it's got you. Great.
Yeah.
1623, don't count them out. All right, let me just grab a quick slideshow here and we'll get this moving. For the record, while this all loads, my name is Joel Tavazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. I'm here on behalf of Upper Banjo LLC. And the main principal behind the LLC, Vito Giglone, is in the audience today. All right, let me get this screen shared. Okay, we're in business. Ignore the 2022 date. That's how long we've been talking to you folks about this. So the quick background, we got a cluster development special permit in August of 2022. It authorized 25 lots across three clusters along a new road called Southwest Drive. In June of '24, we got an extension from this board, but we were working with the Conservation Commission. That pushed the expiration date out to August of 2025. And then November of '24, the Permanent Extension Act by the state legislature bumped us out to August 23rd of 2027. So the underlying permit remains active. In the meantime, we got approval from the Conservation Commission. An order of conditions was issued in April of this year, and it approved plans that were slightly different from the plans you approved. And so we're pressing a minor modification to align your prior approval with the updated plans. So you may be asking what changed. This is what the plan looked like last time you saw it. And, ooh, that's it. We increased the capacity of BMP number 2. There was a footpath that got eliminated. A BMP number 3, it was a small one that was in the back of those yards, was eliminated. And BMP 4 now has additional pretreatment, and that's to deal with the proximity to an outstanding water resource area in Firmwood Lake. So otherwise, look at the standards. You're allowed to apply an application, good cause shown, random minor modification. The ordinance also talks about reasons why we need to redo the public, or open a public hearing. One would be if there's a reduction in amount or change or use of the common open space. We're not reducing the common open space. We're not changing the use of the common open space. We're not changing the location. If we were to change the general layout of any of the ways, that would be a full public hearing. But Southwest Drive is not moved. There's also no increase in the number of lots or dwelling units, that's subsection C. And there's no alteration to the placement of any building or structure by more than 10 feet. So those are the four kind of triggers that would require a public hearing. Again, we filed the application in August of this year. The good cause I'm trying to show you today is that it brings the project into compliance with the Conservation Commission approval. It actually improves stormwater drainage. And just as one little last piece, William Ross, the third-party reviewer that you used during your initial approval, was brought back on board with the Conservation Commission. And so we've been working with him throughout, and the updated design through CONCOM reflects his work with that board. So there shouldn't be any question as to whether the first peer reviewer would have a problem with the second one because it's the same person. So with that, I would ask for a minor amendment to basically have the special permit reference the updated plan set that was submitted along with the application.
Thanks, Joel.
Can I just ask a confirmatory question? So, and I, I'm not sure, based on the plan revision date, my understanding was the order conditions actually included some of Mr. Ross's comments for modification? So was that ever confirmed that those modifications have been included at this point?
So I believe the comments that were outstanding related to some of the way in which the infrastructure was being piped, I think it was a crossover, it was that sort of thing. And that probably will happen kind of in the field. So the as-built will reflect where everything ended up. But I think his concerns were until we're out there laying down the water in the sewer, that like, that would be one of those things where you have to wait until you're out there with the machines to figure out as long as they meet the separation requirements. Is that the condition we're talking about?
I just, I just want to confirm that there were conditions that seemed like they were related to the implementation of his, of his recommendations to the commission, that those are in the plan set, or are they, if they're still conditions?
Yeah, and some of the conditions were not based in plan. So for example, the, some of the lots near the vernal pool will have to have restrictions on how far they can cast light. So that's not going to be shown in a plan set. It's just going to be part of the restrictions for the HOA that will go in once the development's in.
Are questions by board members?
So I'm just trying to get the the process straight here. So you're also on the agenda for a watershed protection overlay district special permit?
Yes.
Later. But these changes from the Conservation Commission came about because they saw a vernal pool and they saw that you were partially in a watershed protection overlay district. Is that right?
They, first half, yes. They wanted some changes in relation to where the vernal pool was. That's why BMP 3, we just, rather than trying to meet the performance standard, just eliminated it. And then it wasn't about being in a WPOD as regulated by the GZO. It was being within a certain number of feet of an outstanding resource water. So there's a number of regulations that apply to various bodies of water. And so it was this ORW standard that the Conservation Commission and William Ross looked at and said, "Hey, you need to get your pretreatment up to a certain, like 80% TSS before it even hits BMP 4." And so there are those called, they're called barracuda, basically separators that are going to be built or be piped into the underground storm systems. So it goes from a catch basin to these barracuda systems into BMP 4. So even by the time it gets to the first BMP, it's already been cleaned up by the sump in the catch basin and then cleaned up more by the barracuda. And then the BMP 4, for the most part, just kind of like fills and heads down to the degree that it would infiltrate, that water's already 80% before it even begins infiltrating through BMP 4 into the groundwater.
Okay, so the, the four changes that you're asking for that are comprised the minor amendment are getting rid of the trail and, and changes to three of the BMPs?
Yeah, and their related infrastructure.
And their related, whatever BMP stands for. I don't even know.
Best management practice.
What?
Best management practice.
Oh, okay. Is there anywhere you can relocate a trail to connect back into trustees of reservation land?
So there's no restriction against the area being used. They just didn't want the trail cut in, so.
Going through the vernal pool?
Well, it's within the buffer to it.
Yeah.
So, you know, and we, we talked with you, we talked about how there's two schools of thought. One is just like, stay away from it and hope that it's okay. The one we've been going with, this board agreed originally, was like, when people take an ownership interest in natural resources, they're more likely to ensure their survival and their success. So like, we thought the trail would help people go, hey, there's, you know, if some teenagers go up in the woods, like, there's beer cans. We need to be careful about this. The CONCOM said we'd rather just, you can go ahead and enjoy the observation of the vernal pool. vernal pool, please don't blaze a trail, you know.
I get it, but, but there's outside the buffer zone for the vernal pool, is there a way to connect to the trail system?
Yeah, the, the trails will still meet up on the southern edge of the property, so like, we didn't, the way the lots, the roads were designed, I think one of the trails goes right into one of the heavily vegetated zones between the clusters, so there'll still be plenty of connectivity, including where this trail was, it just won't be a blazed trail.
Okay, is it, might be helpful to see a map? There's this map that I printed out, which is in one of the PDFs, just that one. So while we're looking for the map, I am just going to confirm with my colleagues and with Greg that this is a minor amendment, not a major amendment? Greg, in your opinion, because I know, under one point eight point five, where we get to say, you know, the Special Permit Granting Authority says that a special permit granted pursuant to this section may be subsequently modeled, modeled, modified by the Special Permit Granting Authority, provided that the interests of the neighborhood and the city are not impaired, and only after due notice and a public hearing, and only for good cause. So while I agree that it's a minor amendment according to five point nine point one-one, it sort of seems like a watershed, you know, all these buildings being in the watershed overlay district is kind of major.
That's.
Off-base on that?
If I may, that's, I think, why we're here later this evening on the WPOD, right? These are, these are two distinct, none of, none of the, none of the changes we're asking for you to modify are in relation to the WPOD or any of those regulations, just, hey, the BMP has changed.
This is just about the vernal pool?
And the, and one B, why, and one BMP has subsurface, you know, the pipe, they're now, a different apparatus inside the pipe, right?
Okay.
That is, again, not being triggered by what you'll be tackling later this evening.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that?
I don't think you have, you certainly have the ability to have one inform the other, I mean, I, I think, and I discussed this with the applicant, the one thing that is not necessarily contemplated in the things that are identified for constituting a, a minor amendment is omission, so we, you know, we had something that was missed in this particular process that can be resolved by the issuance of a watershed protection overlay district special permit, and provided that it doesn't further in any way modify what's been proposed at this point, then I believe they can be approved as minor modifications.
Okay.
So I guess my, my perspective on this is that we've got an amendment request, and then we have like another issue to discuss, and they're, I think, connected, and, you know, and then you can't, can't disconnect them, but I don't know that we necessarily should take action on the amendment before we handle a much bigger issue, right? I mean, so the request for amendment is a request, we could not take action on that, and then see how things play out in the second half of the evening on the overlay district is a, an approach, again. Other comments?
As I understood what you just said, it's a choice to not take action on this item now until we've already reviewed the second one under subdivision plans and public hearings? Yes?
But my opinion on the second item that's, we haven't discussed yet, is that it, it brings in a, again, discretion of this board of the impact of the overlay district to the project.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and I don't know how long we tabled this item, we could table it till after we have the public hearing for the watershed overlay district, or, or continue it to the next meeting, yeah. What is it?
Will the board on the request for amendment?
Mr., Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Procedurally, to achieve the same goal, but to avoid having to do additional meetings, would the board entertain approving the minor amendment subject to the issuance of a WPOD special permit, so therefore if the board does not grant the WPOD special permit, this minor amendment does not become effective?
That's an approach as well, I think I'm, I'm comfortable continuing the amendment request until we get into the, the second part of the evening.
Okay.
John, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna say, the, the board tabling it to the next meeting, why don't we just table it for the time being, and then go on to the next agenda item and see where that flows? If we get to it, we get to it, if not, except for the next meeting, if, if the watershed overlay district question is not answered tonight.
Yeah, that's okay with me, I have to leave at seven, though.
Yeah, fair enough.
So before we leave, we will either address it or continue it, is that okay?
With, with all due respect, there'll still be quorum after you leave, correct?
We'll get to it.
No, no, I mean, before I leave, we'll, we'll either have addressed it, or we will can, we'll, we'll continue it.
That's fair. Good, alrighty, thank you.
Which, which agenda item are we doing now?
They're on to subdivision plans and public hearings. We're gonna talk about Essex Ave, next, Road A. So next agenda item this evening, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law forty-one and rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Gloucester, the Gloucester Planning Board to consider a five lot definitive subdivision plan filed by Seaside Legal Solutions entitled Road A at five ninety-eight and six hundred Essex Ave, assessors map two thirty-seven, lots twenty-one and twenty-two.
Thank you, once again, for the record, my name is Joel Favazza, I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, one twenty-three Main Street, I believe there are staff engineers for the project in the participant list, if any of them want to raise their hand, so that Mr. Camatory can see them and bring them in if necessary, I'd appreciate that. Maybe once I can get my screen going.
Joel, if you don't mind speaking a little closer.
I'm sorry about that.
And slowing down a little bit for our, our older folks like me.
Yes, sir. Okay, so my hope with this one tonight is to just kind of give a brief overview of the proposal, again, the other team members will be able to speak to more technical details, and then I imagine at the end of this, we're requesting continuance and free to schedule a site visit, was told that they have the center line of the road staked probably sometime next week, but probably not before this weekend. So post-project, it's a definitive subdivision looking to create five new residential lots, there are some existing structures out there that are gonna be incorporated into this proposal, and they're sort of driving some of the proposed layouts. So we are at five ninety-eight and six hundred Essex Avenue, it's about three acres between these two lots, we should have a single-family house on them, we are partially in the R-ten district, and the rear of the location is partially in the R-eighty zoning district. I have all the plans that were submitted here, I'll just kind of flip right through them, actually, I'll go back to this one so I can zoom in without losing everything. Okay, so we've got lot one, which is the existing house at six hundred Essex Avenue, lot two, which I believe serves currently as the frontage for five ninety-eight Essex Avenue, lot three has the structure that is five ninety-eight Essex Avenue, and then lots four and lots five are currently vacant, would be in the rear. So we can get back up. So again, the engineers will go through these plans in more detail as to what we're looking to do. So one of the things I'm gonna need to get you is an updated waiver request, we initially kind of came in saying this is like an oversized court, and you know, was a little beyond the maximum lot number, and, and talking to Mr. Camatory, we've agreed that it'd make more sense to just try and get some waivers in the other direction, allowing it to be a smaller than typically required lane. Something highlighted there, so the last highlight is actually for the engineer to ask, I should have deleted that, so lane would need forty feet, we'd have requested waiver around a twenty-five feet of layout, instead of twenty feet of pavement, we'd go down to sixteen, some grade requests, and then we have a dead-end street, I'm working with the engineers to make sure that the fire truck can get through, the engineers will go into more detail on, here's what a twenty-five foot layout looks like with sixteen feet of pavement, still provides plenty of room for safe access, and again, although, you know, less than what a lane would normally have, certainly enough for the five lots being proposed, shows some of the profiles on the grading, and again, the engineers will speak to that further, and then I said we did get a sort of path analysis to make sure that that little turnaround at the end is sufficient for the fire trucks to get it out, and obviously, if, does require some adjustments to make sure even the ladder truck can do their thing, make those adjustments before the final version of the plan. We also asked for some waivers along the lines of curbing, instead of putting in granite, we just wanted to do like the Cape Cod berms, we don't want to put any streetlights in if we can avoid it, again, I think it would be beneficial to both this proposed subdivision and to neighboring properties, the drainage, you'll hear from the engineers that the drainage works without four feet of cover on top of drain pipes, and the, is because they are looking, the reason for the request is because there's so much ledge out there, we're only trying to disturb what has to be disturbed and not to go beyond that, and again, this lot is pretty densely populated with trees, and so we don't want to plant additional street trees, there'll be a considerable amount of foliage out there when everything's said and done. And then we had some content waivers, right? So they want to use an assumed datum rather than mean sea level, that really shouldn't impact your analysis, we hope you're okay with that, one of the cross-sections is not to scale, we hope you're okay with that, and then because of how many trees are out there, we've requested not to have to go out and locate every tree, and I think there'll be some CONCOM permitting at the end that'll also probably impact, you know, the tree stuff itself. So you are allowed to waive strict compliance if those waivers are consistently, are in the public's interest and not inconsistent with subdivision control law, so again, at the end of the day, as I know this board is keenly aware from its work in full and work in subcommittees, we're trying to create new housing in Gloucester, which is a desperate need, the site, Mr. Noonan, to be fair, I quote you a lot on this, one day at one of these meetings, you said, all the easy lots are gone, and all we have from here are the tricky ones, we need to learn how to get these tricky ones to work, and so we have a tricky site, that is not impossible, and so we're trying to, again, this may not be perfect, we're hoping to get it to a good standard where he's, you know, say, hey, listen, this achieves the goals of creating safe access, adequate access, and allowing for the creation of housing out in the primarily medium-high density district on Essex Avenue. So that's all I have on that one, for me personally, I believe one of the engineers is gonna hop in behind me.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name's Rich Williams with Williams and Spragus Offices in Middleton, Massachusetts. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, you should have permission.
Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna take you through the existing conditions first, just to describe what's going on out there in the existing. This lot, as attorney for, as I was already said, is five ninety-eight and six hundred, five ninety-eight and six hundred share, currently a driveway access from Essex Ave, and the lot slopes up from Essex Ave, back about two-thirds of the way, this here is about the high point, this is the highest point on the lot, and then it starts to slope back down again towards the rear of the property. The areas that are hatched, steeper grades, and we also hatched the exposed ledge, so you can see that on the plan.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Could you just distinct, distinguish between the, the light shading and the dark shading? Is there a difference in slope?
Yes. The darker area is exposed ledge. The lighter shading is just the, the slope, and that is... Sorry. I'm gonna have to answer that question after here, I have to look at the AutoCAD, I forget what the slope is, to be honest.
That's okay, I just wanted to point that out for the board.
Yep. And I want to show you the existing watershed map, this is our property, and this area that's outlined in dark on the adjacent property is the limit of the watershed, so we've got a bunch of areas, and we label that as EX one and EX two that are off-site, those areas drain onto our site in the existing condition, so, and, and I'll explain it later, we've got a, we've got to deal with that off-site flow in our proposed condition, and I'll, and I'll take you through that, but this describes basically, this is the path, the longest path of the water coming onto our site, and then the flow from that is combined with flow and discharges to drainage in Essex Ave and, and across Essex Ave to this wetland system across the street. And just for the board's information, we have been to the Conservation Commission, we've had our first meeting, and we're gonna go back there once we get a little bit further through the process with the planning board. And then, again, this, this area, EX one, is the area to the back, that combines and flows off-site to the back of the lot. So our proposed road, obviously, the, the road is in the, in the part of the land that slopes towards Essex Street, so the, the road profile is sloping from the back of the property out towards Essex Street, we've shown, we've shown that slope, it's, you know, it's roughly, it probably averages about six percent or something like that, this is four percent, and then we've got a couple of vertical curves and flattening out to four percent adjacent to Essex Street. And in order to, to deal with the runoff and the, the drainage and make sure that we're not increasing flow off-site, we've, we've designed our drainage system with several components. First of all, we are taking our road and finding locations, one here is an infiltration basin, and infiltration basins for each of the homes, and a surface pond in front of what is number six hundred. All of that flow All of that flow, well, the, the outflow from those systems combines down at the street. And then, just like it does now, crosses Essex Ave and goes to this wetland system. One of the things that we've got to do, because the existing flow or the existing piping under Essex Street is not sized for the fifty-year storm, which is required. We have proposed to increase the size of the pipe under Essex Street from a twelve to a fifteen and rebuild this head wall here. Bear with me, please. In order to deal with the flow from off-site, we've created in this location, a swale. So, flow that comes down from off-site is carried along the, the lot perimeter and then down to the location that it goes now. But is temporarily intercepted so that construction of these homes isn't affected by the flow from off-site. On the, on the watershed that discharges to Essex Street, we're picking flow up in several locations. One is in the road. It's picked up in the drainage system, discharged to this pond. And we also have, similar to the upper watershed, have created what I'll call cutoff swale that picks up flow before it gets to the roadway and discharges it out to the drainage in Essex Street. And again, all of that is combined and goes across the street. We do have sewer proposed for all of the lots within the road, and that's shown on the profile and the plan sheet. And we also have a new eight-inch water line within the road to service all of the homes. We do have to, because of the location of the roadway, relocate a hydrant that is within our proposed construction. We move to the other side of the road. And I think that, I think that, you know, is a good overview of what's happening with the drainage and the utilities.
So if you don't mind, just looking at the, the profile, where it shows, shows four percent, four-point-seven-five percent, and then eleven percent grade changes presumably. I mean, from the, from the Essex Ave location, the four percent grade of, and I'm assuming that these are height elevations, right? So, one oh-two-point-eight-three. And you get up to the four-point-seven-five percent grade, and that's at elevation one-twenty-four-point-five-two. So it's a twenty-two-foot difference. Is that correct?
That's correct. From the start of the street at Essex Street to the end of what we've got up here, it's a basically twenty-eight-feet difference.
And, and what's, how is, what's the grade that the, over that twenty-eight feet? I mean, is it, I mean, obviously, the chart would imply that it's a much steeper grade than something more than four percent and something less than eleven percent. I mean, that, can you explain that?
Well, if, it's about four-hundred-and-forty feet. So if you take twenty-eight divided by four-forty, it's six-point-four percent average. I don't know if I answered your question.
Oh, yeah. I mean, so there's, it was difficult for us to see on the representation how long that span is, right? That four-eighty feet that you're talking about.
Yeah, on the bottom, there's this station. So, yeah, four, that's four-twenty-five. So it's about four-forty. Thereabouts.
Alrighty. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Another way to look at it, it's twenty-eight feet is four percent of one-hundred-and-two feet. Right?
Looking at it that way, too, Jane. Thank you. Does that wrap up your presentation?
Think so, yep. I, I'm happy to answer all the questions, though.
Could you just clarify, what additional permitting beyond local, do you require MastDOT for both the access as well as change the infrastructure in the roadway in Essex Ave?
Yes, there'd need to be, there's need to be a Mass Highway permit for the utility connection, or utility work, and the access permit.
And has there been any advancement of that discussion-wise with the state at this point?
No. And we can't file. They're, they're pretty picky about when they'll take an application. We need to be very far along with, with both boards before we file.
Thank you. Do you have questions from board members at this moment?
Two quick comments. One is, Joel, you, it seemed like you no longer need a waiver from section two-point-one, and maybe some of your other waivers didn't match up with your presentation. So could we get an updated list of waivers?
Yes, as I, if I didn't mention that, my intention is to supply you with an updated waivers list. Because again, the first one you received was oversizing a court. And now we're going to downsize a lane. So we'll get to a written version of that.
And then just a comment, one of your waiver requests has to do with trees. Pretty passionate about trees on this board. So that'll be one of the things I'm looking at it for the site visit is what trees you're leaving if you, if you want to get a waiver for what trees you don't have to provide. I don't expect you to go around and mark all the trees, but it would be great if you gave that some thought before we get there.
Understood.
Are you implying a site visit, Jane?
I'm implying a site visit. Don't you think we need one?
Absolutely.
Just checking. Thought that was a foregone conclusion. You're teasing me, and I missed it.
I know you have a busy schedule.
But you had indicated, Joel, when do you think things would be?
I think we, if you're out there next week, they can get, I was told they couldn't get it done before this weekend. The Saturday won't work, but sometime.
Yeah, I, would have to be either late next week or the following week.
Now, Jane, we can look to the week following.
Pretty much what I already said. Are we looking at evenings or?
Whatever works for the board.
It's, evenings are better for you, Rick. Yeah, so, yeah, so my best evening is again Monday or Friday or Saturday or Sunday.
So Monday is Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Right.
So,
Actually, that's okay. I could do Tuesday, which is the fourteenth, as long as I switch dinner with my mom. But I think she'll probably say okay.
Same five? Five, five-thirty, which one?
Five-thirty for me.
That work for folks? Five-thirty on the fourteenth.
Okay, on the applicant side of things?
That's okay with me, as long as, uh,
Yeah, that's fine with us. We'll, we'll get it staked and have representation there.
Five-thirty. So, we have an opportunity under site plan, or not site plan review, on a definitive plan to accept public comment. There's people that would like to speak for or against. Welcome you to come forward and make your comments public. Thanks, Joel.
Do you want me to leave this up on my screen?
You can stop share for now. Thank you.
Camille Vicenti, one-fifty-eight Essex Ave. And my concern is with Road A. The impact evaluation states that the access for the road will be for four lots, one, three, four, and five, two of which are new lots and two of which are existing. And the impact evaluation also states that the new lots will be duplexes, not single-family homes. And so I know the waiver list has been updated, but I still just wanted to talk about the waivers that they've now changed and requested. The definitive, definitive, definitive plan shows that Road A has the twenty-five-foot right-of-way. And as we've talked about in the subdivision rules and regulations, a road with a twenty-five-foot width is listed as a court. And just to review that definition, that's a street by which its location and design serves as means of access for no more than three single-family dwellings. It's not more than two-hundred feet and has no potential to serve additional lots. And as we've just reviewed for this definitive plan, we're looking at more than three single-family dwellings. We're looking at access and frontage for four lots, two of which are proposed duplexes, and duplexes aren't single-family. So for six homes, this is twice as many as allowed in a court with a twenty-five-foot width. And so as we've discussed, the lane by definition serves four to ten homes, and that seems far more appropriate for a subdivision of this size with access for six homes and frontage for four light, for four lots. And that right-of-way width is forty feet. So, something with a forty-foot width would lots one and two be able to conform? Fifteen feet more road would bring that house in lot one pretty close to the road. Also, that road looks very steep, and the impact evaluation lists numerous ledge outcroppings per the subdivision rules and regulations. If a court is in excess of a grade of six percent, which we've clearly just heard them say that the average is, the right-of-way needs to be thirty feet with twenty feet of pavement. So a subdivision of this terrain, it seems likely that waivers should be limited. This waiver request is severe. I just wanted to also ask if this meets fire code. Thank you.
What's the last, last comment, Camille? I'm sorry.
If it meets fire code with the grade of eleven percent.
The other comments? Again, folks, this is the beginning of a lengthy and comprehensive process. So, if you don't want to talk tonight, you can come back again sometime. Steps. So we've got a site plan visit. And I guess, Tony Favazza, obviously, the public would be welcome, but this is not a question and answer. This is for the board's education only. And there won't be any deliberation as well. This is...
Understood. Again, as long as everyone's able-bodied and, you know, wears appropriate footwear at their own risk, they may come and join us.
Thank you.
If I may, just one kind of final thought is, I think Vicenti kind of gave a good synopsis of this thing we're wrestling with here. And it becomes, you know, do we adhere to the standard for standard's sake, or do we try and do what makes sense for out there to get a forty-foot layout and all that extra pavement? One, you're taking down more trees, Ms. Remson. You are putting more pavement out there. You're probably losing one, if not both, of the existing structures to then put up new ones. And it seems counterintuitive. That is the push and pull of this application is, okay, you know, the standard says X, they're proposing Y. On paper, X is the, is the standard, but out here on this lot, do we actually want that much pavement, that much width? Do we want to replace otherwise habitable houses with, you know, demolition and reconstruction? Where you save the existing ones by going, you know, sixteen feet on a hill out in West Gloucester, still doing better than almost all of what Judd's office has to have anyway, right? So, again, I appreciate her comment. I think that's the push and pull of this application.
I get it. And also, if that updated list of waivers could be supplied before our site visit? Because I know the court versus lane business and the width of the road and everything is part of what we're going to be looking at.
Absolutely.
I'll just comment. Nice analysis, same one that I provided the applicant. And I think in fairness to the applicant as well, site visit, updated waiver list, whether or not they're, they're warranted, would be something to know early in the process. The engineering department has already suggested a peer review for the engineering, which is a cost. So, it's something for you to seriously consider whether the waiver requests are essentially too much.
So, continue the public hearing? Yes, to the next, Joel, to the next planning board meeting, which is October sixteenth?
When is your site visit we just scheduled?
We, we could potentially go out two meetings if it makes sense, but we did schedule it for Tuesday, the fourteenth at five-thirty.
Yeah, that'd be great, even if nothing more than to get feedback, you know, from the site visit and have a conversation on sixteenth. That's fine.
Okay. So I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for the five-lot definitive subdivision plan filed by Seaside Legal Solutions entitled Row A, Road A, at five ninety-eight dash six hundred Essex Ave to our next scheduled meeting of October sixteen, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a motion by Jane Remson, second one by Beverly Bookin. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next under the agenda in accordance with the regulations of Master General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Nine and Eleven, and the Zuning Ordinance of the City of Gloucester, Section one-point-five-point-five and one-point-eight-point-three and five-point-one-zero, Gloucester Planning Board to consider a special permit application for a watershed protection overlay district filed by Seaside Legal Solutions on behalf of Upper Banjo LLC to permit a twenty-five-lot residential development at one-sixty, one-fifty-eight R in one-fifty-four A Essex Ave, Assessor's Map two-eighteen, lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-six. This is our second public hearing this evening. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. For the last time this evening, I promise. My name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, at address of one-twenty-three Main Street here in Gloucester. We are returning back to Upper Banjo. As was discussed a moment ago, we realized after we had gone through the cluster development process that a portion of this property was also within the watershed protection overlay district. You were also the permit granting authority for WPOD special permits. Real quick, I'll share my screen just to orient everybody again. And right now, I'm using the State's mapping tool called Mass Mapper. It used to be called Oliver. So this is, just to zoom out, this is, I see Cape Ann. You see Gloucester here. Everything that is green is designated as an active or inactive surface water area, and then everything in purple is emergency surface water. And then we zoom in out here. So, let me see my cursor. Oh, good. Here we go. So we've got the Lily Pond. We've got Firmwood Lake.
That was walls. Sorry.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. You're right. We have Firmwood Lake. We have Upper Banjo. We have Lower Banjo. And so, we are in the outer edge here. You see the pink line denotes the outside of the parcel that's become the cluster development. And so everything in this purple remains within the emergency surface water because it's a Zone A designation. And so, in order to issue a special permit for water protection overlay district, I need to request, I'm sorry, you have to apply two different sets of standards. One is the normal one-point-eight-point-three special permit standards. Social, economic, and community needs being served. Again, this just allows the project you've already deemed worthy to be constructed with all permits necessary. It's going to create, you know, twenty-five units of housing. It's going to create new growth tax revenue for the city. Traffic flow and safety. We've already been through traffic flow on Southwest Drive and found it to be managed adequately. Nothing's being changed here. Nothing's being changed here. Adequacies of utilities and other public services. Same thing here. You've been through all the utility plans as part of the original cluster development special permit. Neighborhood character and social structure. You've already made findings based on that. This is appropriate cluster development for this neighborhood. Quality of the natural environment. And I think it ties straight into the WPOD issue, and so we'll tackle that with the four WPOD standards. And potential fiscal impract, as I mentioned, there's the ability for new growth tax revenue to be generated for the city as part of this development. And also, as you may remember, provides the necessary revenue for the owner of that property to repair that dam that holds Upper Banjo back. And that was the impetus to this whole project, was this dam needed upwards of seven figures worth of repair work. And the pine trees weren't paying enough rent to carry that. As for the four standards under the WPOD ordinance, you have to find that this is consistent with the purpose, basically, of the WPOD. And the WPOD talks about ensuring that any development within the vicinity of public watersheds will not negatively impact such watersheds. It doesn't prohibit development within a watershed. It does, however, limit uses. If you actually go into section, sorry, section 510, there is a considerable list of prohibited uses, none of which is a cluster development or residential housing. It's really about like use of chemicals. So you get dry cleaning, junk and salvage yard, car wash, boat wash, industrial use that discharges processed water, et cetera, et cetera, disposals of leachable wastes. You know, basically, stuff that's going to get into the ground or run on the surface and potentially get into an actual body of water that's used for drinking water. I will pause there to mention that although it is listed under these emergency water resource, Fernwood Lake is not used for drinking water currently from the City of Gloucester. No one can give me a straight date when it was used last. What I keep hearing is like maybe the 90s is the last time it was, water was pulled from it. However, it remains part of and hydrologically connected to our system, so it is still something to be considered.
Joel, can you just pause for one second? Eric, do you think you could bring up the watershed overlay protection district ordinance so that we can actually see the words that you're referring to?
Oh, sure.
You can keep talking.
Sure thing. So if you want to scroll down to, gosh, 510, 510 6E is what you want. I can throw it up. Either way. So as I was saying, right, so you go, this has to be consistent with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And so the purpose of the ordinance is to ensure development within the vicinity of the public watersheds will not negatively impact them. Again, all of the, all of this development, the road, the houses, the drainage, have been vetted both by you and the Conservation Commission, both times in connection with William Ross, a third-party reviewer. And I think from a pragmatic standpoint, okay, well, every bit of drainage, right, every bit of stormwater drainage, stormwater that hits the road goes into catch basins and then flows down through the BMP system toward Upper Banjo and away from Fernwood. The houses all also required to capture stormwater and put them into either pipes or basins. And those are all shown in the plans that you approved initially and the revised plans that I've asked you to adopt tonight, right? So none of what is happening as far as newly created structures, roadway, are going to allow for surface water to run off of them toward Fernwood. Because again, regardless of the WPOD, other regulations in the city, including both a local wetlands ordinance and other drainage requirements, require that we capture everything and send it, in this case, the complete opposite way, again, toward Upper Banjo, away from Fernwood. And the, I believe, if I go back to, Eric, I don't know if you want me to steal the screen or if you want to. Do you want to go to like, I'll go, I'll turn my screen up. One second, please. If we look again at, I'll use the cities mapping tool this time. So if we look at the cities mapping tool, if I can get a better imagery than this one. Okay, it's almost better. So you can see the green is what was purple the first time I showed you, same delineation, but it was purple on the states. There's green stripes on ours. And she just stays up. Okay, we're still good. So again, when you look at this, you see this kind of funny jagged line. And you go, well, where's that jagged line coming from? We have, you know, Fernwood's over here. And what it is, is if I throw up the wetland map, we have this little guy down here. And that is what's throwing the line that we're seeing up toward the property. And we can recognize that little line. Go on my other plan. Switch my screen over. One second, please. That little wetland that I showed you that was throwing off this line shows up in the plans. Shows up in the plans. This is the lower corner of that lot. And you actually see some of the edge of the wetland itself right there. You can see the 100-foot buffer being thrown off. You can actually see, on this one, some of the drainage features. Again, if you really dial in, you can see all the piping that's bringing the drainage out. So this wetland that is hydrologically connected to Fernwood, as best we can tell, that is throwing this WPOD line off of it, is the wetland that was accounted for in our review with you during the cluster and was accounted for in our review with the Conservation Commission, again, both times with a third-party reviewer on behalf of the city going through it. I'll pull up the language now, so Eric doesn't have to do it.
Actually, wait, Joel, before you do that, can you go back to that map? And with your cursor, show us where the watershed protection overlay district is in relationship to the buildings.
Sure. So the caveat being that this is very much a rough. That line we saw was coming through the lot in this area generally. I don't have the actual overlay of it, but this is the area. It grabs the southwestern portion of Southwest Drive. It grabs a few of these house lots. But that's the vicinity that we're talking about.
I'm sorry, couldn't see your cursor when you were.
Oh, sorry, I was just kind of scribbling in with green. If you can see this green.
Yeah, making green. I think.
Approximation.
I know. I think that the watershed overlay district is the long blue dashes that goes through the building number 10.
Yes.
And goes along the road.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't know that's what we were trying to do here.
Yeah.
I'm over here going, it's somewhere around here. That's great. Thank you, Thad Barry, the engineer, for teeing me up with more than I even realized I had. One moment, please. So now with my cursor, I can do a much better job of drawing that funny little line. All right. So I'm going to take my cursor, just let me draw this. Oh, my goodness. This way, up this way, so it grabs the circle.
Yeah, that's right.
This way. So we've got this guy right here. So we got.
Wait, no, then it goes up towards 16. It goes through 16.
You're right.
And then through, straight through the Vernal Pond. Yep.
Thank you. I went too far in the last scribble. My scribbling. All right, there we go. Up into that corner, back down to this guy. And obviously, again, it's not only being approximate, I want to be clear that it obviously extends beyond the southwestern corner, right? It doesn't stop at the property line. It goes all the way through. So this is the area that we're talking about, zoomed in on the plan. Again, as I mentioned, the wetland, that's, I believe, is hydrologically connected to Fernwood that throws this line off, was accounted for in the permitting with you, was accounted for in the permitting of the Conservation Commission. As you can see, and as I mentioned a moment ago, every one of these houses, every one of these driveways, this entire road, none of it allows stormwater to run toward Fernwood Lake or to even infiltrate, with the exception of BMP4. But BMP4, one of the minor requests we'd asked for, was the upgraded pretreatment of BMP4 to make sure that if any stormwater infiltrates through the bottom of BMP4 before it even begins infiltrating, which in itself further, the water that shows up in BMP4 has been pretreated through those Barracuda apparatuses. And that, again, per Mr. Ross's suggestion, the Conservation Commission's approval, met the stormwater standards for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for stormwater best measure practices within proximity to an outstanding resource water. If I can continue. No problem. So then, actually, do you want to see the words up on the screen? Okay. So consistent with the purpose and intent of this ordinance, two is appropriate to the natural topography, soils and other characteristics of the site to be developed. Again, this is one of those, we went through this a lot in the original cluster development permitting, went through it again with Conservation Commission. This site has been designed and laid out to work with the natural topography. One of the things we talked about during the cluster development was how we were able to use, those come out of the site visit, we were able to use a lot of the existing grading and work with it. There's only a few cut-and-fill places throughout the development. And again, using the soils, BMP4 is located where test pits have been dug and proven to be adequate to receive the stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. Three, will not have a significant adverse effect during construction or thereafter on the existing or potential quantity, sorry, quality or quantity of water that's available from the Water Supply Protection District. This one's fairly easy to talk about. So again, because that line is talking about this wetland resource area and to a degree Fernwood, all the controls that the Conservation Commission put into place about how to construct this road as you come into proximity of the Vernal Pool, come into proximity of that wetland that was southwest of it, all those controls are to prevent what we're doing upland of those from impacting those. So all the protections are in place through that order of conditions to make sure that during construction, nothing is going to impact those wetland resource areas, which happen to be the WPOD-specific wetlands in this case. And two, as I've said, my third time saying it, after construction is complete, all the structures, driveways, roadways, et cetera, do not drain toward them, they drain away from them. And everything is captured and sent the other way. So, you know, Fernwood Lake is not going to know about Southwest Drive, essentially. And four, is designed to avoid substantial disturbance of soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. Again, this is, we located this proposal to work with the existing topography, the existing soils, et cetera. Drainage has not changed, as you recall. We had to do all those pre and post calculations. We had all those different water catchment areas, you know, on the entire site. And we had to show that what we were doing was not going to negate the impact recharge by reducing it by too much. It was not going to negate the impact, other things, by putting sheet flow in the wrong place. All those things have been buttoned up and examined thoroughly as part of your original approval for the cluster. And then again, as part of the Conservation Commission's approval, the same drainage system. So again, I think you can very easily make a finding that we are not going to have, you know, some substantial disturbance to the soils, et cetera, that are going to impact other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. So if you can find that we've met those four standards, and you find that we meet the standards for 1.8.3, which you've done once already with this, then you're able to issue a watershed protection overlay district. And the last thing I was going to say for perspective, you know, the watershed protection overlay district permits I've come here before on have all been industrial in nature. This is actually probably the least impactful, you know, and definitely the most heavily previously vetted application I've come to you with for a WPOD. So I'll leave it at that. I hope you make those findings, that we meet the criteria of the WPOD and the criteria of the 1.8.3. Thank you.
Joel, if you don't mind, before you put the mic down, go back to 510 7, talks about fertilizers.
Yeah, one moment, please.
10, 510 7?
Yep.
So I guess, and I'm sorry that we're having this conversation so late in the game for both the applicant's purpose and for the planning board's purpose, but as you delineated with this watershed overlay protection permit that affects almost half of the houses, if not more than half the houses. Okay. But I mean, the presumption is, right, that people are going to put fertilizer on their grass, right?
So if you're asking, will we accept the condition, sorry, that says that we will not allow that, that's absolutely fine. So I'm trying to find the.
But I mean, there's a whole paragraph on 510 7 that speaks, that, I mean, so we just went through everything but 10 7. And so maybe we can just step through the sentencing here to see something that's manageable.
Sure. So for any use involved in the application of fertilizers, pesticides, or herbicides, the applicant must obtain a report from the Board of Health Agents stating that all necessary precautions shall be taken to prevent hazardous concentrations making its way into the water. So again, the idea here being that, not necessarily that you can't use these products, but that you'd have to have the Board of Health Agent, I believe it would be probably, it's Hurley at this point, say that, you know, you can use this much fertilizer before you trip the line of having a hazardous concentration making its way toward the watershed. And even in that instance, it would really be, although it does impact, the watershed overlay district comes across multiple lots, it's really just those few lots, the backyards of a few lots in the southwest corner that have any sort of grading out and toward. So for instance, all the lots that are inside the loop, even if there were fertilizers used or herbicides used and those ran, they would run into the stormwater system and again, head down toward Upper Banjo, not toward Fernwood. So it would only be the backyards of a few select lots on the lower left-hand side of the property that would even have a chance to run off. But again, we have no problem taking a condition as to quantity type, prevention, you know, organics only, like, that's all fine. But we're not proposing the use of any of those chemicals right now. So we didn't think we needed to have any sort of permit allowing the use of those chemicals. We're not asking for it.
Other questions with the applicant at this point?
Yeah, from Greg, actually. This says, after due consideration of the reports and recommendations of Board of Health, Concom, City Engineer, et cetera. So I wonder where we're on that. Question number one. Question number two, I don't feel qualified to say whether or not this would have a significant adverse effect during construction or thereafter on the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available. It doesn't say that it has to be a reservoir that is currently in use. It just says it's available, the water is available. So is there some expert that's going to weigh in on this?
So in the past, these applications have typically been relying on the review of the engineering department. They are looking into a number of issues with this. Again, fully acknowledge, this was somehow missed over a long period of time. It, you know, part of the stormwater management plan originally submitted delineated the watersheds. So we knew where they were, but off-page. That was not something that was recognized in the engineering review. There are a suite of standards that the city has to apply to the protection of the watershed protection districts by state regulation that are being looked into as well. And I think, you know, until we have some of that information, I think it will inform, you know, what the potential impact of the district has on the project. But I think we will be reliant on the feedback from those, this has been referred to. The Conservation Commission has, I believe at this point, kind of met that requirement by issuing an order of conditions with full acknowledgement that the resource areas were identified as outstanding resource waters, which is why the stormwater systems were modified to accommodate those state standards. But the other aspects of what is applicable in terms of standard from being an operator of a public water supply remains to be determined.
If I may, and with all due respect, the ordinance only gives the engineering department 35 days to comment. We're 50 days into this and we haven't received it. But you do have, again, a private engineer, Bill Ross, who examined this drainage system and this layout once with you already and gave it a thumbs up and you approved it. And then a second time with the Conservation Commission, gave them a thumbs up and they approved it. And, you know, I appreciate that this was, this is no one's fault. It was unfortunate that everyone, you know, myself included, didn't recognize the need to get this permit at the time. But we are already, you know, 50 days into what should have been a 35-day review from the city for drainage and roadway construction that has been reviewed so, so thoroughly, two separate public hearing processes to date. And to Ms. Remsen, you know, I believe, you know, whether you feel qualified, the zoning ordinance says you are qualified. The zoning ordinance says this planning board, you know, and I think it comes to a very simple, I mean, you could just go, which way does the water run? It's not running to Fernwood, it's running to Upper Banjo. Is the water soaking in? Nope, it's not doing that either. The one place it's soaking in is BMP four. As I mentioned, BMP four has been upgraded, or rather, the pretreatment to BMP four has been upgraded to make sure that if any soaks in through BMP four, that water's meeting the Massachusetts stormwater standards for being this close to a water resource area. So I do think you have the ability to do this. I do not think you need to wait for more input from the city staff when you have a private engineer that you hired once before already telling you these work.
Mr. Chair?
Good, Sean.
I agree with Jane. I don't feel specifically qualified to weigh in on such a technical issue like this. And typically environmental concerns, we take the lead of CONCOM. And from my perspective, again, without having additional information, but my initial take is that, my assumption is that CONCOM wouldn't have issued their conditions if there were some overriding concern beyond that, even though in this instance, we happen to be the special grant granting authority as opposed to CONCOM. So applicant has to come to the planning board because the way the ordinance is written. But in the past, I think we've typically relied on the judgment of CONCOM to handle these environmental concerns. And it would seem nonsensical to me that they would approve the project, again, with their conditions, if there was an overriding concern that this somehow was going to affect our water supply as well.
I'll just be clear, they also have a certain jurisdiction and then there are other jurisdictions as well. So that's why it's not just a Conservation Commission review. It's also Board of Health and the engineering and actually the water compliance officer that has to operate the public water supply. So I do, sorry to disagree with you, Joel. I do think there'll be specific feedback that is absolutely identified and outlined in the ordinance of what you should be receiving. And then you make the judgment based on that information that's in front of you.
Right, so Sean, while I may agree with you, I haven't seen the decision of the CONCOM, nor have I seen the report of the city engineer or any of that. And plus, this mentions the Board of Health. And by the way, you can call me Jane.
Thank you, Jane. Again, the only thing I would, the only reason I'm pushing here is they have 35 days. At this point, any report you receive is outside the allowance for what they have to come in and comment. So with all, again, all due respect to city departments, if the city engineer or someone else, you know, says, hey, despite the fact that this was, I'm actually looking up when the order of conditions was, I think we were in CONCOM for over a year working on this. And so, you know, to the degree that reasonable minds can disagree and you may get something or an alternative suggestion, the time for that has closed, right? If I have 35 days to get you something, I don't get it to you, you don't get to consider it, right? If they have 35 days to get something to you and they don't, here we are at day 50. If you push us out another two weeks, we'll be at day 64, a 35-day window to get you comments. I think I could understand if this was the only permit before you on this project and this was brand new to all of you, so Joel, I got to hear from the city engineer. But because you have so much peer review by a third-party engineer already and because, as, you know, Sean noted, the Conservation Commission has looked specifically at these wetlands that contribute to Fernwood and have conditioned this project to protect those wetlands and make sure that nothing we're doing is going to impact those wetlands. It is not as technical a question as you may think it is. It's more of a pragmatic logic question of if they have all these controls in place to protect these wetlands from the development and these wetlands are what impact Fernwood ultimately, then we know we have the controls in place to protect Fernwood and the watershed. Again, it's just, you know, so that's why I would ask you to rely on what you have and not drag this further.
But we have 65 days.
65 days to open the hearing and you rest when you have the information to make a decision.
Right, so it's not my problem that people didn't do what they were supposed to do within 35 days. I'm just the planning board doing what I'm supposed to do in 65 days, which I have done.
Other comments? I guess my perspective is, Joel, you know, 35 or 55 or 65 days. I mean, we're at the tipping here, right? And meaning that if this further review, and you can appreciate this, everybody looks at it through a different prism and sees different things, right? And so if there's value to be had in the next 15 or 20 days, certainly within our 65-day permitting thing, if there's value to be understood and we can move forward, we will move forward, right? And we want to do that in the most, you know, pragmatic way that we can put a straight face on and improve this overlay district to make this thing finally come to a close versus, you know, saying, oh, we've got all this private input and we should feel comfortable. That's not the way to make a decision, right? And so I am happy to wait for the city's people to look through their things and give us their feedback and we will be compliant with our 65-day window and we hopefully can put this thing to bed forever, right?
Yes.
And please appreciate, right, this is the first cluster that we've ever done, right? This is the first opportunity that we've used open space as a body of water to make this thing work. We've had every possible complication, right? We are, you know, at the verge of saying, move along and thank you for coming back. And don't come back, right? But that's my perspective here. We're at the 95, you know, we're at the five-yard line here.
I understand.
So.
Just because we're throwing timelines around, I just want to be perfectly clear. The only 65 days was to open the public hearing. You hold your public hearing until you have the information. You don't have the information and the applicant really wants to make a decision, you make a decision based on not having enough information.
For the record, Greg is correct on the timeline.
Okay, so. So we are in a public hearing process. I'd like to have anybody in the audience come forward or anybody that's on the Zoom call this evening to either raise their hand electronically or step forward and state your name and address for the record and share your comments.
Hello, hi, thank you. Camille Vicenti, 158 Essex Ave. I just wanted to address Board Member Henry's comment. As someone who did sit through every CONCOM meeting, that drinking water was out of their purview. So exactly what Greg was saying is there are certain things that's in their purview that they can talk. But there's, I mean, even the watershed protection overlay district is your purview, so going with that. We have found out after the fact that this cluster is in a Class A public water supply watershed. In the original public hearing, there was no discussion that one-third of the project is in our emergency public water supply watershed, a critical natural resource. Per GZO 5.9.11, the addition of the watershed overlay is not a minor amendment. This is major.
Please clarify what was just said, please.
So Joel is saying that 5.9.11, if I'm...
I think Joel can rebut. I think we should just let her continue with her statement.
Thank you.
And arguably more major than whether a structure has moved by more than 10 feet. One could argue that this is even a change not permitted per 5.9.12, in which I can speak to. Per GZO 1.8.5, modification may be made to a special permit only provided that the interests of the neighborhood and the city are not impaired. Yet the omission of the watershed was deceptive and public interests are impaired. The public, the project must be redesigned so that the impact on the watershed is minimized and public interests are protected. The design should be forward-thinking, striking a better balance between the need for housing and the need for clean water. Since cluster regulations granted developer increased density in trade for open space, the presence of the watershed should have been integral to the discussions as to where to place open space, taking the land's natural resources into consideration. Open space should be located in our watershed closest to the neighboring tributary, yet instead lots 11 through 13 are positioned up a very steep hill and within 200 feet of one of the two tributaries that feed Fernwood. This proximity is concerning. The property line is within 50 feet of a tributary and 400 feet of the source. Distances that would be within Zone A, a critical protection area. And although Fernwood is an emergency public water supply, activating Fernwood is not a distant concept. As discussed in the city's 2019 watershed management strategy, the water supply in Gloucester is vulnerable to future droughts if climate trends tend towards the more extreme conditions of warmer temperatures and less rain in the summer. And we've seen critical droughts even in recent years. This strategy included an action item to generate a design that uses Fernwood to improve the overall resiliency of our public water supply. If Fernwood is activated, and let me rephrase as it's less of an if and more of when Fernwood is activated, lots 11 through 13 would be 200 feet of this, within 200 feet of this tributary and subject to those drinking water regulations and potentially unbuildable. Or they would be unbuildable. At current, this cluster does not meet the criteria for a special permit per 1.8.3 and 5.10.6 to build in the watershed because of the significant adverse effects during and after construction, the drastic changes to the dense woodlands and the added impervious development, its effect on runoff speed and runoff quality, the diversions of water away from the watershed, the placement of stormwater management within the watershed. It was recommended that that stormwater management be placed outside of the outstanding resource water. The substantial disturbance to the soils, drainage and vegetation up a steep hill and within close proximity to the tributary and the potential negative fiscal impact from the increased water treatment expenses. And because as the need rises for clean water as we add housing and encounter more droughts and extreme rainfall. The ethical and responsible design would be to remove lots 11, 12, and 13. In a project with three less homes and one that preserves an acre or two of land closest to the tributary as city watershed land, that will fill our community needs much more than the current 25 homes. The project's scope in the watershed and proximity to a tributary is concerning and the special permit per GZO 5.10 should not be granted. The project should be redesigned to prioritize open space to minimize the impact on the watershed, preserve natural resources, and protect public interest. Thank you.
Well, if you'd like to rebut. Pardon, pardon? Yeah?
I was just asking if there was any other testimony.
Well, why don't we just deal with her and then if anybody else would like to?
Sure. So again, I say this just to, don't mean to be disrespectful. A lot of what was just cited was factually legally incorrect, okay? I appreciate her concerns. I appreciate the overall passion behind it. But a lot of what was just thrown at you is not what regulations are. There is nothing in the watershed protection overlay district that says, so long as you are 50 feet, so you can't have any building or structure within 50 feet of the bank of the watershed, right? Other than that, and those prohibited industrial uses, dry cleaners, et cetera, the WPOD does not say you can't build in it. It just says you need to come to the planning board and get a special permit by demonstrating that what you're building in the WPOD is not going to impact the water resource. It very clearly anticipates that things can be constructed. Structures, roads, et cetera, can be constructed in the WPOD. That's why this special permit process exists. If the city wanted the WPOD to be a no-build zone, then it would be a prohibited zone, period, in the GZO. No construction, no road, no nothing. Again, and they did that. 50 feet out is a prohibition. We'd have to go to the zoning board for a variance to try and pull something off and I wouldn't imagine we'd get very far. So I just want to make clear that the purpose of this is not to prevent construction or development within the district. It's to ensure that the construction and development in the district is not going to adversely impact, in this case, Fernwood Lake. And again, I hope that the city department over you will bolster. You have, actually, this is kind of a story. Will you be willing to share with the commission, the board, rather, the commission's order of conditions? I can send out to you.
Oh, I certainly can, yes.
Yeah, because I invite you all to look at it. Again, you'll see after a year plus of review what they did, not only changing our plan, but also conditioning the work. There are, yeah, looking just now, there are actually, to your point, Mr. Noonan, there are some prohibitions against herbicides and pesticides being used in some of the lots already. In any event, as I've got here to say, just, this district is not to stop you from building in it. It's to make sure whatever you build isn't going to impact the resource negatively. I think it's substantially, to be fair, but we submit there's no negative impact, period, to it. I hope that next time we can talk about this, you'll have a chance to review the order of conditions. You will hopefully have received from, feedback from city staff and then we can take this and that modification request back up simultaneously.
Dennis? Dennis, can you hear us?
Yes.
Fantastic. The floor is yours. I just need a name and address for the record and...
Hi, thank you. Dennis McGurk, 283 Concord Street in Gloucester. Very interesting, interested in listening to this proposal. We've seen this before, implementing a cluster or subdivision ordinance in West Gloucester is a very difficult task. These projects, clusters, and subdivisions were not designed for the difficult terrain that defines West Gloucester. I'm very surprised to see that at Upper Banjo, the presence of the watershed was an afterthought. It should have been a part of the original design. But the water supply at Fernwood Lake is very likely to be compromised. The wetlands are everywhere. These supplies, water supplies have to be protected. And you're just very walking, you're walking a very thin line trying to make something fit that I think doesn't belong. And I'll say that for, your process at the Upper Banjo has been going on for four-plus years. I witnessed the Carrigan Cluster, which is now in its eighth year, trying to find a solution. And it's the same problem, spending years jockeying a project to fit the terrain. And it's disappointing to see that this is carrying on. I don't know how much third-party review was here. I couldn't understand what you're saying about whether you have actual outside third-party review not hired by the attorneys or the developers. I thought that was something that was going to be done. And that may tell you a lot. And that's really all I have to say. This is, you know, we've been watching this going on. There are a lot more projects, there are 598, 600 Essex Ave that I listened to, listening to. there are 598, 600 Essex Ave that I listen, listening to. All easy sites to be built on, they said, and this is a difficult site layout. It is. The terrain here is extremely difficult. And I just think that something carries on this long, there's a reason for it. It's just too difficult to be done. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Appreciate that. Anybody else in the audience or online that'd like to make a comment? Seeing none?
So, Mr. Chair, just my brief response to that would be, you can't just throw blanket statements. This is going to impact the watershed. This is going to do that with no basis, no substance. Again, when you have a chance to go through, you will see that this question of, will this development impact these wetlands, which ultimately feed Fernwood? You'll find the answer is no, these will not negatively impact these wetlands. This thing has been designed and redesigned to carefully ensure the safety of those wetlands that feed Fernwood. Thank you.
I guess we need to continue, okay? Yes.
Okay, so first I move that we continue the request for amendment of a cluster development plan filed by Seaside Legal Solutions on behalf of Upper Banjo LLC to permit a 25-unit residential development at 160 158 R and 154 A Essex Avenue to our next scheduled meeting of October 16th, 2025.
Second.
So we have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Steve Yost. All in favor?
Aye. I also move that we continue the public hearing for a special permit application for the Watershed Protection Overlay District filed by Seaside Legal Solutions on behalf of Upper Banjo LLC to permit a 25-unit residential development at 160 158 R and 154 A Essex Avenue to our next scheduled meeting of October 16th, 2025.
Motion?
I'll second that.
Fantastic. So we have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Steve Yost. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, under other business, Planning Board Representation on the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee.
So I think there were some initial thoughts. I think at this point, it probably would make sense for just board members to discuss who might want to participate. I think ideally, not a quorum of the subcommittee, but if any folks are interested in participating, it could either be two members, that could be alternates. I'm not, this is something that is, is mostly going to be headed up by, by Alex Koppelman. But it certainly could kind of take on an effort where it's an alternate so that you wouldn't have to commit to all of the meetings, but also would have the ability to certainly attend them if you, if you do have the time. So if there's anyone that has the time and is interested in participating in, in another committee, you can have that discussion and decide amongst yourselves.
How often are the meetings?
I'm, I'm thinking that they might be quarterly. Yeah, so, but I'll, I'll get a little bit more clarity. You don't have to decide right now. There hasn't been any scheduled meetings yet, but you can consider that and maybe we can have a couple of dozen of these at the next meeting. Because I know Jane has to go, so.
Yeah, but, and also like the purpose of the, of the meetings. I understand the words in the title, but like, I don't, I don't exactly get.
Yeah, I think it's to make sure that this group is going to be representative of boards, committees, and commissions. So there's a little bit of cooperation to understand who's going to be working on what, educating folks on, on what the initiatives are and kind of keeping people informed on what's going to be worked on in the short term and then what's potentially going to be tabled for, for longer term. So it's, it's kind of tracking progress and also probably some exchange as well to keep, you know, for this, this group of folks to then understand how people are interacting with the plan and what they're working on. And eventually, that information will be documented through kind of a dashboard or portal that people can track and see what efforts are being worked on.
And other, it's representation, there's representation from other boards and committees?
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
And I think it's a worthy endeavor for us to have representation. I did receive a letter from the mayor asking me to serve in that position and I am not able to do that until at least after June 1st of next year. So I'm sorry that I can't be a participant.
You can think about it, for sure. Just wanted to put that out there. So Alex was originally going to, to provide an update on the next item. I think we could probably continue that discussion into the next meeting. And what else do we have? So I also put a draft, did I put the draft in there? Oh, good, good. Well, I was unsure. Decision for the 9 and 11 Andrews Court Common Driveway. And if there's no issues or concerns or typos or anything, just a motion to approve that. And then I can have the chair sign it and we'll file it.
Okay, I move that we adopt the decision for 9 and 11 Andrews Court Common Driveway Special Permit.
Motion, we need a second, please.
So moved.
So a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Doug Cook. All in favor? All right.
And one item that wasn't anticipated. We have hired a new recording clerk.
All right.
So Alicia Brennan will be starting at our next meeting and then working on some of the backlog as well. So very excited, reviewed those. She, she works for another municipality and provided some excellent examples. So I'm really looking forward to that.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And then a second, please.
Second?
Motion to adjourn by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Sean Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.